We are now live.
I call this, um, meeting to order and announce a call on residents at seven o'clock P M. Let's see here, Councilwoman Hill, do you mind leaving us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, moving on to proclamations, this, uh, meeting, we have a proclamation. Oh, excuse me, I forgot, I forgot. This was a long time. Yeah, this next, uh, proclamation is for the National Preparedness Month. This proclamation reads as follows. Whereas September is National Preparedness Month, which serves as a reminder that we all must take action to prepare now and throughout the year for the types of emergencies that could affect us where we live, work, and also where we visit. And National, and whereas National Preparedness Month creates an opportunity for the residents and businesses in the city of Maynor to repair their homes, establishments, and communities for any type of emergency, including natural disasters and potential terror attacks. And whereas this year is even more important imperative for the city of Maynor to recognize the need for preparedness in the midst of this pandemic, keeping our residents informed about public health issues is paramount. And whereas the city of Maynor, along with other regional, state, and national partners, support the WarnCentralTexas.org campaign to increase public readiness in preparing for emergencies and educating citizens on how to take action. And whereas preparedness is an ongoing effort of all citizens in the Cat Dog Region, including youth, older adults, and people with access and functional needs. And whereas investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, businesses, and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation throughout our nation. And whereas emergency preparedness is a responsibility of every citizen in the city of Maynor and all citizens, or occurs to make preparedness a priority. Now therefore, I, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor of the City of Maynor, Texas, and on behalf of the Maynor City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2020 as National Preparedness Month in the city of Maynor. It occurs all citizens and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan. Go to WarnCentralTexas.org to register to receive emergency alerts and work as a team towards that end. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand across to be affixed to seal of the city of Maynor on the second day of September 2020. Signed, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor, City of Maynor. And I will give this to our city manager. Oh, thank you. All right, next up are going to be public comments. Here we have Mr. Uh, Clay Gargle, did I say that right?
Don't be nervous. Oh, no. So, uh, I'll take this off to tell them who I am if you see me in Walmart now, so. That's not me, you know anybody when I go to H B, you won't. So, uh, I'm, I'm Clay Gargle. Uh, we just moved over here in June, uh, my wife and I. Uh, we own a couple of small businesses. One, I pour property for a developer over here, which, uh, is kind of my backup, my proof that Maynor is growing. I have seven sets of mailboxes I don't have on, I need to get four of them, so. Another thing we do is we have a little advertising business. We make shirts, caps, t-shirts, cups, bags, you name it, having a border machine, different stuff. So we brought a kid over here to play football in Maynor. And we, we were seeking a program that had stature and of course went deep in the playoffs last year. And so we picked Maynor and we came over here. My wife's a teacher, spent a couple of twenty years and she quit coaching just to move over here and take the teaching job, so we could get him on platform where we wanted to be in school here. We get over here and so I said, hook me up to the, uh, you know, booster club. Oh, we don't have one, so my wife finally told me to get one started. So here I am, uh, I'm present to the booster club over here. I've been out in the area here now and stirring up a lot of, uh, a lot of money to be raised for the football team. Uh, there's, there's a ton of businesses here that would love to do something, uh, and there's no booster club that's been here for a while. In doing that though, uh, someone pointed out to me the other night, we were with Casa Garcia, and they pointed out the window and asking if I would come up here and ask y'all to repaint the water tower, uh, because they were all sitting there looking out the window. And so it does look pretty bad, uh, I'll agree. Now, now that I drive by it, it kind of annoys me too. So I'm asking for y'all's permission, y'all would table it, do whatever we need to do to get some motion started towards maybe getting the repainting of that tower. Uh, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of people coming through Maynor and, and that's one thing you do definitely see. And I think it would look a lot better. Second issue, uh.
If I could, just for clarification, which tower are we talking?
The one right here behind Sonic.
Okay. I thought it was this tower right here behind yours.
Is it behind us? I, I'm not sure where I'm at, I'm still over here.
But, well, the tower's in both locations, so.
Yeah, the, the one with the Mustang up, up here, I think. Yeah, it's got a Mustang, it's really painted out, uh, so it's, it's, it's due for a paint job, uh, I think. And that's why I'm asking if y'all would consider, uh, I don't want to stir up anything, but I would love to have a, a new paint job on that, if you can get it.
That was for you, sir.
Sir.
For you to live.
I live right on the shop lane, so, uh. The second issue that we come up with while doing this, unbeknownst to me, I was putting packages together. Rio de For is going to come in, uh, you know, Two Ninety Cafe, uh, there's a gentleman that owns that now, he's new to the area too, uh. I've got several down the way. Sonic's wanting to do a Football Friday night, to do Sonic Night, you know, we've got several down here. So with our package that we're gonna, oh, I find we're gonna make t-shirts, go in and boost club, they're gonna shoot them out at halftime or every touchdown or whatever, and it's gonna have Two Ninety on back. So, but with the package, I was, you know, you give us five thousand dollars, I'm gonna put you on the school, we'll get your banners here, you know, shirts and shirts for your boys to wear, and a flag to put out in front, and then I got told, oh, there's a flag ordinance, you can't put flags up in Maynor. So I was maybe asking to see if y'all could, uh, go back and look at this. Uh, I grew up in a small town in West Texas. Uh, my dad, forty years ago, was driving because they changed the, the blinking light to stoplight, you know. I remember all, we had gotten about all those stupid hunters in town. Well, now you can't get a cow on ranch out there, it's, it's all hunters, all right? Times are changing, so maybe y'all could, uh, look back at your laws, ordinances, whatever it is, and consider, uh, allowing flags to be flown. Because we have a lot of Maynor flags that we can put out all over this town and start up a lot of, uh, a lot of fanfare, honestly. So I didn't know that the, uh, flag ordinance would affect, and we would love to put banners up if y'all would allow that. Now, I'm not talking about go out there and throw two keepers up and, you know, hang some firefly between them, but we were making wood knives, we were putting on flagpoles, we were getting, you know, correctly done. And not just throw a bucket of paint on the front of a building or something, you know. So if y'all would please consider that, that would be, um, two things that my wife will stay off me about.
I appreciate it, sir.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, next up we'll have the public hearing. Uh, first up is consideration discussion of possible actions on the F Y twenty 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 one proposed annual budget of the city of Maynor, Texas.
Mayor, council members, uh, just want to go through the process just a little bit for those of you who, uh, came on board last November. Um, each summer, June, July, we get together with each of the department heads and ask, uh, what they think they're going to need for the following year, whether it's equipment, personnel, any, any number of things that, that may come up. Um, we did that this year and when all the asking was done and we finally got our information from Truth and Taxation, uh, we found ourselves with nine hundred thousand over what we expected to take in. Uh, we presented that to the, um, Budget Committee, and a recommendation was made that each department find a ten percent cut, uh, not on what they're asking for, but on their overall budgets in order to try and bring this down. There were a couple of things that contributed to it. Last year, there was twenty-three million worth of successful protests against, uh, property values, which reflected about a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars towards our annual budget, uh, which is, which is significant. And so each of the departments did that, um, what we've done in order to meet that requirement is defund some of the positions that we had, uh, open, available, but, uh, not utilized. Uh, Development Services Director was one of them, was, and police officers, uh, and through the, all of the departments, really, some equipment, um, was also taken off the list. And we're, we're going to revisit that mid-year like we always do and, and see whether, uh, the money might be there then to add these things back. Um, some of the highlights, uh, with regard to this, this year's budget, and this goes across the, the board, so you, you hear this for each department, but, uh, we've had an increase of nine percent of the health insurance cost. Uh, we're asking in the police department, we're approving but not funding the following positions. One lieutenant, one community office. Officer, I'm sorry, I knew that. Four social resource specialists, two new patrol vehicles, one new animal control van, uh, an additional or renewing all A E D machines. Floor repairs, uh, we've got problems with the floors coming up in the police department or trip hazards, um, which I've noticed myself. Uh, replacement of eleven ballistic vests, and all of you, I think, have been part of conversations where we understand that there is a life cycle to these vests and that they do need to be replaced. Uh, so this, in our opinion, is something that we, we do not, uh, take away from, from the officer, we, we fund these. Uh, an increase of eighty-seven percent for Travis County Emergency Radio Service and an increase of fifteen percent for Travis County Dispatching Services. In our I T department, uh, again, the nine percent of health insurance, a twenty-two percent increase to wireless communication for new employees, purchasing twenty-five new desktops, purchasing WatchGuard to cloud Asia for storage, and that would be for police information. Uh, Community Development Department, an anticipated increase of nine percent again to the health insurance cost. With regard to Public Works, we've got the health insurance and increased building repairs and maintenance for furnishing the new Public Works facility, which looks great for those of us who have walked down and gone through, uh, and it continues to move forward, and I, I think, is it October tonight, or?
Mid-October, I think.
Hopefully. Hopefully mid-October for, for occupancy. Um, and just going to side, because we have issues with, uh, folks here in this building space-wise, we're going to be moving our Building Department or Building Department Services down to the new Public Works Building, which pays for everyone there, uh, they'll be comfortable and I think set for a little while. Um, we'll still have another office available and we'll talk about that in a future date too. The Water Department, anticipated increase again of the nine percent health insurance, wastewater, the nine percent again. Uh, Administration added a budget line item for Municho. Uh, this is the software used to maintain our ordinances. This had previously budgeted under Development Services, what we've done is moved over. Uh, increase of eighteen percent to the sales tax rebate for the renewed development. With regard to Finance Department, again, the nine percent. An increase of seventy percent to the credit card fees paid, but this is partially offset by the G L and Utility Fund to recover this expense. We had an increase of twenty-five percent for postage, this is to cover the utility bill mailings. In our Streets Department, uh, again, the nine percent health insurance, an increase of a hundred and twenty thousand for street repairs and maintenance. Uh, vehicles include one truck, one rubber tire roller, one water truck, and one crack sealer. Uh, with regard to Development Services, uh, the nine percent again, and there is a carryover of a hundred and fifty thousand from last year uh, to go towards the, um, comprehensive plan that, uh, we'll talk about a little bit later on tonight. Um, with regard to Parks Department, again, nine percent, uh, we, one truck, an increase to park maintenance for the construction of bathrooms at Termin Park. We do have money in a park fund, which is created, uh, when either subdivisions or other residential developments like apartments, um, donate towards an open area fund or parks department. And, uh, we now have the money in the, in the budget to, uh, move forward with getting that built and its necessity is, as we see it, for future events. Uh, and with regard to Court Department, it, it's just the nine percent to the health insurance costs. Uh, I've got each of the department heads and managers here for questions you might have. Um, we've been able to close that gap again with, uh, defunding of, uh, some positions and, uh, equipment and things of that sort. Um, right now, we find ourselves at about seventy-six hundred dollars short, which we do think will be able to make up. Um, if you look at the records, it says a hundred, about a hundred and fifty-seven, but that one fifty is a carryover from, from last year. And so again, any of the departments are, that's your here in order to respond to questions. And Lydia, of course, does the bulk of the work with the budget and can find things in there quickly.
The, uh, the only questions I have is, is three of them. And so it's the vehicles, the vests, and the desktops. And so I already know Community of S A, Police Department already has vehicles, wasn't even more vehicles. So if you can speak to that as far as, oh, there's, there's two vehicles going away, is one going to someone else, is it repurchase, you know?
Yes, so we currently have three vehicles down with transmissions, and these are older vehicles. Uh, you know, as I talked upon, there's never going to be a year that we don't need vehicles because vehicles phase out, they get used and they, and these vehicles are on the street, a lot of times they're driven really hard. So the vehicles that we're requesting this year are just replacing other vehicles, so it's not like we're adding maybe to our fleet. Uh, and the fleet just gets old and, and we eventually have to, have to replace it. One of those vehicles is the Animal Control Van. The Animal Control Van that we currently have is the oldest vehicle in the entire city's fleet. Uh, it's a two thousand and five, four-cylinder pickup truck, which they don't even make anymore. Uh, it was never, when it was purchased, it wasn't purchased to serve what it does right now, and it has held on its every last mic to get us the service that it provides, but it is on its last leg. And then eventually, we would have to make a decision, our, the repair is probably going to cost more than what the vehicle is even worth. So, and, and, you know, there's functionality issues of it to, you know, what we're going to replace it with that will make our Animal Control Officer's job a lot easier and more effective.
The, uh, the other one is regarding the vests, I know they have a life cycle on it. Uh, and usually, uh, and this is my assumption from, you know, vests from when I had it, I mean, is there a reduced rate of, of getting the new vest, returning the old vest, or how does the process work?
No, so the manufacturer puts a lifespan on the vest. And when that lifespan is over, they don't guarantee anything. So if one of our officers gets shot, and it's a malfunction in the vest, then there's no recourse the city, uh, or the officer, or their family can take against the vest manufacturer. So, uh, that's why it's important, why we push it, you know? It's like, well, you know, let's, let's make them wear the vest one more year. Well, if that officer were to get shot and the city pay out all this money and, and the medical bills and taking care of this officer and their family, there's no recourse for us to get anything if it was a failure on something that was meant to protect him or her. So it is important that we, that we replace it and our officers want us to, you know? They want their community to provide the protection, but they need to do this job that sometimes requires them to utilize that vest.
Appreciate it. And the last one is the desktops, they have twenty-five desktops. Uh, is, is it part of the life cycle process? Is it, uh, um, new purchases because we're, we're short?
This is a combination of both. Uh, since I've been here, I implemented a four-year life cycle on all our desktop PCs. And so part of it is we are retiring a good portion and then also for expansion of new positions that we acquire.
That's all the questions for me, but, uh, anything for council? And regards to the technology, do, um, are any of those innovative? Were any of our technology needs being reimbursed, uh, because of COVID?
Yes, a good number of them are, uh.
Should be.
Should be, yeah. Yeah, we're waiting for results on a lot of that.
Can you give us some projected numbers on what that reimbursement could be?
Total reimbursement that we requested from the CARES Act is eighty-seven thousand.
Okay, and so, and that's not reflected in here?
No, no. And then again, that's anticipated, uh, that doesn't mean that we're really going to get it, so.
Is that minus the twenty-five percent, is that in rate?
Your, your guess is beautiful, I'm waiting still for complete understanding of everything that I had submitted last week.
Okay, so the total you seem to say is seven?
Yes.
Okay.
But the total allocated that they had, that, uh, Travis County had put together was about a hundred and twenty-two thousand in reimbursement.
So, okay, so a hundred and twenty-two, and we're expecting eighty-seven back, okay. Any additional questions, councilman?
Uh, what's our requirement for a balanced budget?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't question.
What's our requirement regarding a balanced budget?
We don't really have a requirement, um, until Lydia and I started to take over budget. Each year, we saw, uh, previous administrators win the budget with, uh, in the negative and hope to, uh, correct that over the course of the year. And generally speaking, uh, fees, um, for development services types of things usually closed that gap, was just we hadn't anticipated much money coming in. Um, but over the last, I'm going to say, four or five years, we have had a balanced budget proposal for, uh, council, uh, without being the negative number. And our estimates, Lydia and I differ a little, but they're still very conservative. And so closing that one, that seventy-five hundred gap, I don't think will be an issue. We're not seeing this slow down in the construction that we thought, uh, so I think we fine.
And we also take into account, uh, in prior years, we've also had hurricanes and have, uh, brought in additional damage that we were not aware of. And we usually try and have, uh, a balanced budget just so that in the event that something does happen, that doesn't, that isn't covered by Fila or that isn't covered by our insurance because it happens to be an active, you know, an active danger, uh, we usually have a buffer of that, and, and for me, it's usually about ten percent.
Okay, yeah, because I, since we're streaming live and, you know, our residents are watching, I was wondering if you could kind of, you know, we have a budget committee and we talked about the conservative approach based off of what we think might or might not because of COVID and the impact on taxes. And can you just kind of do like a, maybe one minute summary of how we're projecting, how to gut this from a conservative perspective on income and revenue, so that, nothing?
So, I, I'm going to take part of this, yeah, I'm, I'm going to take part of that question. Um, when it comes to Development Services, we, we have consistently, uh, anticipated a lower number of permits than we actually see. And so we've done that again this year, not knowing how COVID might affect, uh, the number of permits that, that get issued. And of course, with each permit that's issued, there are impact fees, there are inspection fees. Um, our subdivision process hasn't really slowed down, not aware of. In fact, I think it's ticked up, we're, uh, we're having to respond now to subdivisions that aren't complete, wanting to start issue building permits. So there's, I, I think the result at the end of this year, and we're going to see it mid-year, is that more single-family homes or commercial properties, there's a few of them sitting out there as well, uh, permits will be issued than, than we anticipated. So typically, I err on the low side of Development Services. A lot of the other fees are, are things that we really can't or don't have control over, like the health insurance and dispatch and, and that sort.
Yeah, and then we also take into, so that's the Development Services side, which is, uh, probably about, oh, probably about a third, maybe forty percent of what our revenue is coming into the state. The other bigger portion of it happens to be our property taxes. So the property taxes, um, in, in a nutshell, we wait until we receive all of the, um, uh, from the Travis County Frazel District, the valuation. So there's two different valuations, there is the taxable and then the actual value, uh, which you'd think would be the same, but it's not. Um, and so then we take that and we look at what the growth, I look at what the growth, um, was, number-wise, I look at the growth of what that was. Then I go back and look at what our current tax rates are and what, what they're calling now, uh, the terminology has changed. Before it was, um, effective rate and hearing rate limit. Now it's, now it's no new rate and voter-approved rate. Um, and so within those figures, we try to go ahead and keep it within a very non-impactful number to the residents, because, you know, could I have got, could, wouldn't my suggestion would have been to increase the budget, I mean, increase the tax rate? Sure, I, I, we could have, we could actually increase it without even going to a vote. But we're choosing not to do that because, like Tom said, I have no, I don't have a crystal ball to tell me what the next year is going to really truly be like. The city won't really understand what the impact of COVID was for another year. Uh, we haven't seen a, a decrease in sales tax, as a matter of fact. I saw a twenty-four percent increase in sales tax over the last six months. What does that tell me? People are spending money, they're not, you know, they're not really hurting, so, and then, you know? So there's lots of factors that go into this, but as Tom says, he and I kind of, we meet half in the middle about what, what is really a realistic number and figure, a percentage, to really project out of what revenue is actually coming in and where our expenditures need to be. And we take into account every department in here, what do you really need? I know my friend wants a lot, and so why, but what does the city really need? What is more beneficial for the city?
And I, and I'm asking those because we, we already talked about those things in the Budget Committee, but it's more for, um, the voters, as, as they're getting ready for election and they're asking different questions on certain, uh, propositions and different things. And so, uh, they want to know that.
Do those propositions, then, are they about?
Well, no, they're just, in all, we've seen questions from the voters and so. And so we want to make sure that we're just kind of throwing out that there's a lot more that goes into the planning process and that there's some, um, that we are being physically responsible. So I just wanted y'all kind of elaborate on that.
And on our website, we also do post all of the previous year budgets so that they can see where it's at, and they also post what the final. so that they can see where it's at, and they also post what the final amended budget is at the end of every fiscal year. Uh, we also have the audit reports that are done every year, um, for, for the community to really delve, delve into, you know, in, within the data, and they'll be able to, to look at all of that information. And obviously, I'm always a devil, so.
Yeah, I, I think this is, you know, as Councilman Harvey said, a good opportunity for us to inform the community, uh, not just community itself, but those running for office, uh, that may be thinking that the city is sitting on a revenue or, or a profit.
My family's right outside, so.
I know, uh, and, 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 and for them to, they're hearing this, but they probably are not hearing everything that is really being said here is that we're working off of a deficit, of a deficit right now, trying to balance it. We could raise taxes, but this is, you all are recommending not to do that based off of your years of experience, that, um, you have continually made a conservative approach in managing this budget, that everything as far as decision-making and expenses that Tom just read off is all life cycle oriented, so it's not wish list, so let's buy it, uh, and, you know, I, I think that's key. So people know and understand that you all are doing a significant, uh, arduous job in managing this city with minimal funding, taxes, revenues coming in. And, 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 and that with everything that is going on, uh, I would have to say, uh, much respect given for what you all are doing with minimal resources in trying to take care of a community that's growing like wildfire with not a lot of additional money coming in, even though everything's booming around us and more expectations are increasing. So thank you for the report, uh, we are at a deficit of seventy-six hundred?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five hundred. Uh, again, we are not, it is not being recommended to raise taxes to cover that.
I can't, I can't help that Travis County increases the value.
Right.
That Travis County, you go to that commission court.
And, and, and the city is not the one that receives the highest portion of a resident's taxes. So I just wanna reiterate that because this seems to be a learning point right here, an informing point right here, that the team is doing everything it can do to maintain services and support with the deficit without creating additional issues in, uh, uh, hindrances on the community, especially during a pandemic. So, thank you.
Yep.
And if I could, I, we have not offered any cost of living increases for staff, um, which helped us to keep this budget as close as, as it is.
Yeah, I was saying, I think we discussed that there wasn't, uh, one employee that would lay it off, correct?
Correct, no, we were, we know, no employee, since the pandemic has, uh, has started, no employee has been laid out.
Yeah, so, uh, Councilman Scott, what?
Yeah, uh, when was the last cost of living raised, even to a suit?
Uh, it was October of twenty, uh, nineteen.
We, we've typically kept pace with the, the cost of living this year, uh, given the circumstances with what's happening in the community with the pandemic, uh, we didn't think it was justified to, uh, offer more money when others might be struggling.
And we would revisit that, uh, probably about mid-year, which in December is when we, the city received the majority of our property taxes and from Travis County. And that gave us a better idea of where we will be sitting at by the end of next year.
And, and I think for some of you who are, are new, um, just a few years ago, we had a pay study done. Um, and the result of that pay study was that for the most part, uh, we were in line with all the other cities in the area, we offered competitive salaries. Uh, there were some tweaks here and there, but nothing like what we imagined it could have been like. And so again, we'll, we'll revisit the cost of living, what I don't wanna do is fall behind, uh, fall behind the way we had been in past years and then try to have to make it out in the two, three-year period. So we'll look at it again when we have a better idea in the year.
And last question, since you, you brought up, Councilman Harvey brought up the proposition, proposition E, uh, centered around the recommendation from the Chart Committee, which was approved by council regarding the, um, what's it called? The compensation for council.
Mm-hmm.
How is that, uh, how will that impact the budget in future years? Uh, I know that most of us are under, under the assumption internally, and I know for me, if it is approved by, by the, uh, community, it can be approved but not funded. And that would probably be something that I would be asking, is, is approved but not funded, especially given the situation we're in right now? But what type of?
I would have to check with legal on that because if it was voted in by the community, I don't know that's.
I, I, I think we would need to wait at least a year before it could be implemented.
Correct, it wouldn't, it wouldn't occur until the following fiscal year.
And, and I think we looked at a fifteen thousand dollar.
I think it was under twenty thousand dollars in that. I know I say twenty thousand like it's, you know, nothing, but I mean, in the grand scheme of it all, yes, twenty thousand would probably not be difficult to gather from development services. Thanks, Scott.
Any additional, uh, questions from council? All right, if not, I close this, uh, do I have a motion to close this public hearing?
Uh, you wanna make a recommendation to our first public hearing, or is that what we're doing now?
Yeah, we're, uh, we already, that's what we're doing right now, so does he have a motion to close it?
Um, so I make a motion to close the first public hearing on the twenty-twenty-one proposed annual budget of the city amendment.
Yes, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there a properly motion and seconded? Uh, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes, moving on to the second hearing, consideration, discussion, and possible action on the FY twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one proposed property tax rate of the city of Maine and Texas. Go ahead.
Okay, so like I said before, uh, we will not, the recommendation we set is not to increase, uh, increase the, um, average rate, it will remain at point eight-one-six-one. And that's what we have advertised, and again, um, I think that because of the current situation with the pandemic, I don't feel that it would be, um, appropriate, this is not a appropriate time to go ahead and increase, um, the tax rate for anyone in the city. Um, but that's just, that's my recommendation.
Any questions for council? I think we gotta talk about this one in the first one. All right, there being no questions, do I have a motion to close this hearing?
I don't make a motion to reclose the hearing, the first public hearing, number twenty-one proposed property tax rate of the city of Maine and Texas.
Is there a properly motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being no questions, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes, moving on to the consent agenda. Uh, all following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion, there will be no separate discussion on these items unless it's requested by myself or a fellow council member, and which have been the item will be moved from the consent agenda and considered separately. Uh, we have item number three, which is consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the city council minutes of August nineteenth, twenty-twenty regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the city council minutes of August nineteenth, twenty-twenty.
Is there a properly motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And properly seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes, on to the regular agenda. Item number four, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve an amendment to the agreement with the city's bond council for public improvement district bond council services. Tom?
Mayor, council members, um, Mayor Heights is the PID that we're, we're talking about here. And, uh, over the course of the last several years, um, ownership has changed. And so there was, uh, a slowdown, almost a stop to the, uh, process of moving forward with, uh, with the PID and bonds. Uh, during that time, there was also a discussion of moving away from a reimbursement bond to another type of bond. And so our, uh, agencies were getting a little nervous about the actual cost of services that they were providing, um, and how much they would actually collect for their services when the bonds were finally issued. And what this does is amend the, uh, documents to allow for payment of a portion of what they feel is due and the applicant and developers that agree, uh, to make that payment now. There will be another fee due when the bonds close, but this is to help make up that difference that might have been lost otherwise.
Is there a motion on the floor?
So, we, we need this right, I mean, it's just amendment of the bond agreement, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to council approve the amendment to the agreement with Bickerstaff, Keith Delgado, Acosta, LLC to provide PID bond council services.
And a properly motion, do I have a second?
I second.
And properly seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? Go ahead.
No, never mind.
Okay, uh, there being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes, moving on to agenda item number five, consideration, discussion, and possible action on a service land agreement addendum between time clock plus LLC and the city of Maine for timekeeping services, Lydia.
Yes, uh, so we are a growing city, as y'all know. Um, one of the things that we are really needing to, um, fix is our payroll process to mainstream it a little bit more, and this is what the most effective, uh, cost-effective way into implementing this. Uh, this, so it would, it's not a time clock that people punch, it's a, it's a web-based, uh, service. Uh, and they also comply with all FMLA rulings, um, and would track, um, especially now with COVID and the different types of leave that is available, uh, will also monitor that and assist us in for reimbursement.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Make a motion to, um, enter into the accept and move, move into the service level agreement, addendum between time clock, um, plus LLC and the city of Maine for timekeeping services.
Is there a properly motion, do I have a second?
I second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion? Go ahead.
I saw that, I was at the top of that, all right, so. Make a, uh, make a motion to approve the service level agreement addendum with time clock plus LLC in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, so I'll see the manager to execute the agreement.
Most of the property amended, do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded, go ahead, uh, Councilman Scott, you got questions?
Uh, yeah, on this, um, so we'll be monitoring what they're doing pretty regularly and, and this is for what, one year?
Monitoring who?
These people.
Yes.
Okay, and this is for one year?
This contract is for one year, yes.
Okay. So probably more.
And this is just for regular, like, hours, right?
It's all staff.
This is to replace all staff, so the systems, to upgrade to the all-staff system so we can digitize it a little bit better and.
Correct, because Russia currently right now, it is not digitized, it is all handwritten.
Yes.
I don't see that, but, I mean, some people can't write, so.
I, I think that's key to note, you said, you said it's hand-written, right? That's all you had to say, you should have started off with that, this is hand-written, we're asking you to.
Yeah, I already wear glasses and black goggles, I don't need more.
All right, any additional questions? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes, item number six, consideration, discussion, and possible action on the resolution authorizing the release of a request for proposals for a comprehensive plan, Tom?
Uh, Mayor, I'll let Scott jump in if I miss anything here, but, uh, what you see as part of your backup, actually, I think it was, uh, an amendment or an update, and that update, uh, was to number five. What we did was remove the needs assessment for the public buildings, like City Hall, Police Department, and Public Works, but we left it in place or are leaving in place, uh, libraries and, uh, community centers and things of that sort. Um, just to give you a little bit of an update, we're gonna move forward with the needs assessment for the building. Um, the estimates that we're hearing are under twenty-five thousand, which I'm authorized to sign upon or, uh, execute upon, uh, determining which company offers us the best, uh, best price. And so we're, we're gonna be moving forward with that pretty quickly. Um, but again, the change here is just to take City Hall, Police Department, Public Works out of the facilities. Uh, uh, necessity, I'm, I'm drawing the blank to the word, the needs assessment. Um, but leaving in the libraries and the other things that the community is, has asked for or may ask for at the end of the comprehensive plan.
Can you just share a little bit on the necessity and, and I guess what I would see as urgency for putting those up?
Correct, why?
Yeah, can you share that, please?
I can share with you that, um.
Just I guess about space?
Yeah, I was gonna talk to you about this and maybe extend your session the next meeting, um, but so many of you know that we, we've talked about a certain building here that, uh, was available, um, a year ago, I think is probably when we first started talking about it. Uh, I raised the question again, did hear back from them, they are in a bit of a hurry because they have a tenant for that building, a seven-year tenant to take over one entire floor. Uh, that's in the works, I cannot produce everything I need to do in a quick enough time to turn that around. Um, they're, they're looking at within months of having this tenant in place. Uh, I want the needs assessment to get started so that we can start to figure out what square footage we're gonna need, what, or how many personnel we're gonna need and start to accommodate those things. And then come back and talk to y'all about the potential of buying some property, uh, and, and having that available for us to look at development. Um, I've told the folks that in one particular building, we'll keep in touch with them, but it would be hard for me to ask them to hold up on seven years for the rent when it may take us a year and a half or two years to get all of this done.
Sounds good, um, is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, um, the city council approved resolution number two, twenty-twenty-six-seven, authorizing the release of a request for proposal, uh, for a comprehensive plan.
Uh, is there a properly motion, do I have a second?
I second.
Second to me, all right.
I second.
They're probably seconded, oh, sorry, that was me. All right, there probably motion, I missed my mic up, so I made it out of crack, okay? Um, no, the only thing I wanna say before I ask questions is, uh, if anybody's gonna go to the packet and view it, see under Article Three, the project scope, that has one, infrastructure, two, traffic and transportation, three, current, future land use, four is the two-ninety corridor plan, overlay plan, historic overlay plan, five is facilities, as Tom talked about, six is parks, trails, and open space, seven is economic development and downtown revitalization plan. Again, I say seven is economic development and downtown revitalization plan. Uh, eight is sustainability, and nine is branding, again, nine is branding, so, uh, any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand, none opposing, motion passes. Item number seven, consideration, discussion, and possible action on appointment to serve as the capital area council of governments, the general assembly representative for the city of Maine, Tom? Tom?
Mayor, council members, we've reached that threshold in population that allows us to have two members on the board. What this does is allowing you to make an appointment to a second person.
So basically, it's one nomination. So I just need one nomination to fill the additional position we have on CAPCOG. Is there a nomination out there? If there's no nomination, do we wanna wait until elections? Do we have time to wait till elections?
I, you know, in reading this, it looked like they were wanting to respond soon and that, but it's something I thought about too with regard to those of you who are deciding not to run again. But I'm not sure that we can wait that long. We can bring this back on the sixteenth, if that's your preference.
I know that, well, we have the General Assembly on at night, so I'm assuming I should be able to ask that question as a General Assembly, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So was asked, and then was this put on temporarily on the agenda for the next meeting?
So we'll postpone, the recommendation would be to postpone.
This council, yeah, that's postponed, okay. Do I have a motion to postpone item number seven to the next city council meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to postpone item number seven, which says to approve recommendation that the city council reappoint, actually, can we still, let me take that.
Can we? You could reappoint the mayor and then postpone the portion of this for election of the second person.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve, or approve and reappoint Mayor Wallace Jr. and appoint, and postpone the appointment of a council member to serve as the Capital Area Council of Governments, CAPCOG, General Assembly Representative for City of Maynard to the next council meeting.
Which would be, I think, the sixteenth?
Right.
Is it the sixteen?
Yes.
Is there a properly motion? Do I have a second?
I second.
And seconded. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? All those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passed. I now declare this meeting closed.